Anyway, good morning, ladies and gentlemen. A welcome to this postponed Nairnshire committee meeting. It has only two items, but so welcome everybody first and foremost here. And then we'll go to any declarations of interest. And Peter, you said you make a formal declaration here. So Peter, Peter, yeah.
I am declaring a non-financial interest in respect of item one on the agenda. The coastal Highland Coastal Communities Fund in my capacity as a director of the Nairn bid. But I don't think that will preclude me from taking part in any discussion.
Okay, thank you very much. And Laurie, I think you normally make a formal declaration here.
Yeah, not I don't like this time because there's no it's only for housing.
All right, right. Okay, that's fine. Nothing relating to anything your involvement. Okay, thank you very much. Now we move to a what is a formerly item three on the agenda, which is the Highland Coastal Communities Fund. We welcome Fiona and Paula. We have had a previous discussion around this and you've done a piece of work on this. And I think Fiona, is it yourself who's going to speak or Paula? I'm not sure Fiona yourself.
Yes, I'll speak, thank you, Chair. Good morning, members. So yeah, just in summary, this is the Highland Coastal Communities Fund, which is a new fund for economic regeneration and sustainable development around coastal areas in Highland. This is the first allocation that's come to the Nairnshire Committee for a decision on projects. And I would just remind members that at the moment this represents two years' worth of money. But we would expect a further annual allocation in respect of his funding later in the year.
I think that somebody not on mute, there's a phone.
So you have two applications in front of you today for a discussion and a decision. And I suppose the decision would be looking for in respect to both applications would be whether you wish to approve the funding for them to fair the application or reject the application. There is an application from St Ninians Junior Football Club for three and a half thousand pounds towards total project costs of six thousand pounds. And an application from Nairn bid for eight thousand five hundred and ninety pounds towards total project costs of fifteen thousand and sixteen pounds and forty pence. So all in all, the two applications come in at twelve thousand and ninety pounds, which is the amount that you have available to allocate. So there's no resource implications should you wish to approve both occasions. And trying to support members and making their decision, we've provided a technical assessment summary for each project and also a RAG assessment summary. So the only point I would make about that is that both projects are considered to be eligible. They both passed the technical assessments, members can approve them if they wish. In respect of the RAG summary assessment, there are red amber or green ratings given to some of the key assessment criteria. And I would just flag up any amber ratings or red ratings perhaps suggest an area of concern where we might wish to include a condition of funding, but certainly don't make the project ineligible. So both applications are eligible to go forward. And I'm happy to answer any questions or provide a brief summary of either project if that would help.
Thank you very much indeed. Any members got any questions of clarification? Any points to make? No. I'd see your little circle is flashing Liz, is that in? Yep, okay, you have a question or a point to make.
Yeah, I do, I support both the applications. I'd just like to point out on page six where the lollards and the lamp posts are going to be painted from the railway station down to the bree, which I welcome that, but I remember a few years ago, there was a lamp post up at the railway station, which was one of the traditional vans. And it was painted a different color and it should always be brown. And I remember Mr Coombs contacting us and we had to get it redone to make it back to brown. So as long as it's the traditional colors, then that's fine. I'm certainly happy to support those applications.
Yeah, okay, any other members, any? Well, first and foremost, thank you very much, ladies, for doing your assessment, your homework for us and giving us this recommendation. It's good that we get some money into a be able to enable some projects to go ahead in the town. And we look forward to this money being invested in the infrastructure in the town, making the place be just a little bit better. And also the St Ninians Football Club, they do a tremendous amount of work when they are functioning properly without the lockdown. So again, it's good that we're able to encourage them and support them and enable their work with young people. One evening, I must admit, I was passing the football ground and I got smacked on the head. And it was a young lady who came over to retrieve the ball, but I made no comment. I just kind of picked myself up and kept walking. So we'll see anyway, but it just proves that it's both boys and girls who are being supported and helped by the club. So again, thank you very much, ladies. Members, are we minded to approve this in the terms being suggested? We have no reservations and we authorize these payments to be made, we okay? We're okay with that, right? Okay then, ladies, thank you very much and we wish you well. No doubt with another round of funding somewhere on the horizon, we will be encountering you again sometime. Thank you very much indeed for your contribution.
Thank you.
We now move to another item, which is Nairn visitor management car parking. This is in the context of a Highland wide where folks are looking at management of visitors over the summer months. We anticipate a significant influx. This is a temporary arrangement whilst a full consultation is carried out. And we welcome Shane, who has had several conversations with us over the years. So we look forward to you just telling us a little bit of the background and see if we have any questions of you this morning. So welcome to the meeting Shane and over to you.
Thank you, councillors and good morning. Yes, so on the back of previous discussions, there's been, you know, more recent developments we're all too well aware of, which is leading the service to look at some 21 car parks across the local authority, three of which are in Nairn, to look at a better management of these sites, generating income that can be reinvested locally to further develop future infrastructure to support visitor management. And the three sites that we're talking about in Nairn are the Harbour Car Park, the Coming Street Car Park and the Maggot. And obviously the Coming Street Car Park and the Maggot are common good land and the Harbour is Highland Council land. So the proposal is quite simply to introduce an invitation to pay policy for 2021. So we would install parking meters, tidy up the car parks where required, make sure that the adequate lining and signing was in place and some additional signing around informing users that we're inviting them to pay and that the money would go to local investment. So it would help support the community and delivering visitor facilities now and in the future. The general premise would be that we would use the already agreed council policy that the income would be split 50 50 between the service and the common good fund. So that the Coming Street and the Maggot would receive 50% of all the net income into the common good fund. And the Harbour Car Park, 50% of the income would go to the idea committee and 50% would go to the service to help develop the service. There are obviously some issues around current activities which members are familiar with. So how we deal with motorhomes, for example, is a question I'd like to get the views of the members on. And things like parking on the grass at the links is something that we really need to be tackling to sustain the links in the wonderful condition that it is. I have, I can share my screen if I'm allowed to at some point, you know, depending on the questions that come from yourselves, members. I've got sort of a indicative tariff structure, which is, oh, there we go. I've got my, I've got my sharing done, so I can share that information for you now. Can we see that, members?
Yes.
So, so just this is an indicative tariff structure. So I thought I'd keep it nice and simple, give people two hours, four hours or 12 hours at the car parks and they would pay one pound, two pound and three pound. We would use standard council protocol in that charges apply seven days a week, ATM to 8pm for visitor sites. And that at the moment, I'm proposing that we maintain the current position of prohibiting motorhomes between 10pm and 8am. But obviously this is just a starting point, members, and your views will be important in finalizing those tariffs. And the car parks itself, obviously down the bottom left hand corner here, we've got the links and Coming Street, we've got the Harbour and we've got the Maggot. The Maggot is obviously in very good condition after an investment that was previously made in the site. So there's not a lot of work to be done there. I think that the Harbour, we will carry out some tidying up there, redefine the bays and probably make some wider bays. Oh goodness sake, sorry, I must apologize. My phone's ringing. So we've got some wider bays. I think we should acknowledge the fact that it's a key site for motorhomes during the day and make sure that they're accommodated. And down at the links here, this image is great because everybody's parked in the car park. Maybe if they were to have taken pictures last weekend, they would have seen that they were all over the grass. So members, I do have concerns about that. And again, I welcome your views and any questions you have on that subject. So we currently have traffic regulation orders already on these car parks. So they're already subject to enforcement and management, not for charges, but for people abusing the car park, parking out of bay, doing unauthorized activities, et cetera. So that, so that has already been taken care of and that's part of the council's main traffic regulation order. You can see here in specifically the links car park, that the Hatch Stadium covers the car park. We don't have an order on the grass, so to speak. So management of vehicles on the grass is a problem because we don't have any traffic regulation order that covers the grass. So that's me, members. Again, it's an invitation to pay for this year and any further development of enforcement would require an extensive consultation, which would include obviously common good assets being subject to public consultation as well.
Okay, thank you very much Shane. Okay, members, questions for any clarification? First of all, any questions of Shane, we okay?
Well, I've got one on the legal issue, where you're saying it's a 50 50 split. Is that actually legally correct? Because my understanding is that money raised for common good, once you pay off the cost of the meters, you have to, the remaining should stay remain with the common good fund. Have we got a legal opinion on this from Stuart Fraser?
Shane, you want to respond to that one?
I, it's a very good question, councillor Fraser. I think all I have done is mirrored the current policy position of the council to share income from parking with the relevant committee. And as this is common good land, I've just assumed that the same, the same approach would be taken and it would be a 50 50 split. What we tend to do with other common good land sites in the past is that the common good have at least, well, not actually physically leased because you can't lease, but they have an agreement in place ahead of terms that is equivalent to a lease in which the council rents the land from the common good fund. So they agree a rental and that's paid regardless. And then whatever activity happens on the car park, that income is goes to the, goes to the service because they're renting the land and the common good is guaranteed the rental income. So that's what we've done elsewhere. But for this year, we're suggesting that we just follow the standard policy and just split the money equally, the net income after costs, split it equally between the service operating the car park and the common good fund. So it's a, it's virtually a business transaction, you know, for the right of making it a public pay and display, maintaining it as a public pay and display car park, we're giving 50% of the income to common good land.
Okay, Liz, you are next, I think.
Yes, thank you. So there's not going to be any enforcement over this first season. Will people be aware that there'll be no enforcement, that it's just on a voluntary basis? I mean, there's going to be signs up saying it'll be on a voluntary basis, but the other question I had was, members are to agree the installation of car parking machines. And do we, does this funding for that come from the council or from the common good to actually install them? Because we've got to agree to the installation of them. And the tables you showed with the prices for one, two pounds and three pounds, will that be for future years and not for this year? Because if it's a voluntary contribution, they can surely just put in 50p or whatever they like into a box.
Thank you councillor. So the, the, all the funding for any of this activity will be paid for from the budget allocated from the visitor management plan. So I have funding in place to install the machines and provide all the signage. So the common good fund will not have to come, have to come up with any budget for this. This has all been funded by the service and the Highland Council. The enforcement, there will be enforcement in the car park, but not off the parking charges. So we will continue to manage the car park so that the car park doesn't get abused. So if motorhomes are prohibited after 10 o'clock, we will continue to educate those, those motorhome drivers with visits around eight, nine o'clock. If we find any in the car park, we'll be telling them that they need to be out by 10 o'clock. And if there's somebody, you know, sets up a food stall or does other unauthorized activities, that's enforceable under the current traffic regulation order. But you're correct, no enforcement. So if somebody doesn't buy a pay and display ticket, then they, they, they will not be issued a penalty charge notice. The site will clearly state it's an invitation to pay.
Excuse me Shane, Laurie, I think you're making a wee bit of a noise there, could you mute?
Sorry, didn't realize that.
Right, Shane, sorry about that.
That's okay. So, so it will, the sign will, will have a sign in the car park that will be separate from the regulatory signs that will clearly state that beside the parking meter, we'll say it's an invitation to pay and that the income will support local investment. The reason why I've, the invitation to pay, I want it to be, you know, formalized as well so that people, you know, have a clear understanding of the value of what they're paying. So if they're going to pay, you know, so if they're going to stay all day, they're paying three pounds. We want to be clear with people what the value of the car park is by having a clear tariff structure. But you're right councillor, if somebody chooses not to pay, then there'll be no action taken against them. But one would think that most visitors generally, their habitual nature, non-local visitors tend to sort of look at a parking meter and go, well, you know, I'm just going to pay because I feel better about it. And generally speaking, you get at least 60% compliance from voluntary payment schemes. But this will all be monitored, members, and reported back to you before any further engagement or any discussion around making these regulated tariffs.
In response to that, I would just say that I would go with, with you on this one Shane, of the one, two and three pounds for this year, giving people a guideline. I simply base that on the fact that I have gone to the theatre at Putloughley on several occasions and the car park there has parking meters. And it suggests that you should pay two pounds for your ticket. But it also then says that this money will be used for the purposes of developing the work of the theatre. You know, so there is, there is no penalty, but there is a suggested contribution level. So you know, that's an experience I have had and I found it quite helpful. Part your car, you put your two pounds in, you feel okay. And then the theatre benefits. Anyway, Peter, you have your hand up.
Thank you, Tom. Going back to the point that Laurie made earlier, Shane, we have this particular problem with certain bodies in Nairn regarding the common good. And I think we need to be particularly careful about how this is structured. Because it will undoubtedly be pointed out to us that legally, the council cannot make a profit out of common good assets. It can cover its costs enough, I mean, but we're going to be very problematical in this case with what the costs are going to be before we start. Have you any idea as to what the cost for the summer season might be?
Well, well, the costs, the costs of retrieving the money, installing them, the machines are going to cost about 10,000 pounds per site. So that's two machines per site. And then there's the, the civils required, you know, putting a concrete pad in for them. They're all solar powered, so there's no power supply to go in. We just, obviously I'll get some additional signs made up, which are nice and, and bright and clear and have some reference to Nairn on them, you know, that say, welcome to our car park. Please can you, can you make a contribution to support local investment? The, the, the issue around the common good funding side, you know, I agree. I mean, we have to be transparent and very clear in what we're doing. And that, and that's why I'm suggesting that this, that we follow what has already been a sort of a set policy by the council about sharing car parking income. But I would just suggest that the common good fund will make a lot more money under the 50 50 split than they would under how we currently manage common good land. Because, because for example, a car park would be rented, depending on its size, you know, between five and 10,000 pounds a year from a landowner. And let's just say common good land is the landowner. The, but the income levels, if there's reasonably good compliance for the, for the pay and display, could be anywhere between 20 and 40,000 pounds for these car parks. So at 40,000 pound income, the common good fund will be making 20,000 pound a year instead of a fixed rent of five to 10,000 pound a year. But bearing in mind that the council's making all the investment and will maintain the site as well. So the average car park, the annualized cost to run a car park, if you were to take over the 40 year lifespan of a car park, it's about 60 pound a bay per year. If you were to break down all the costs relating to a 40 year lifespan of a car park. So a 60 space car park, you know, is, is, is three and a half thousand pound a year, annualized costs, you know, for surfacing, white lining, signing, lighting bins and all the other ancillary costs over the lifetime of the car park. So the common good would have no burden from this arrangement. You know, the council, if something breaks or fails, it's the council who's going to fix it from, from their income.
Okay, I think, I think the sense we're getting here Shane is we just need to maybe get a wee bit of advice. Do the 50 50 and so on, I think we need a wee bit of clarification on that, just to be absolutely sure. I think Sarah would be the lady to give us a clarification on, or Stuart Fraser on the legality of it. I'm, I'm content to be share the, the, the income. Some, there's some background noise here, I'm not sure who's trying to play. Somebody's trying to play what I would call an emu caller from Australia. But the, the bottom line on that is just to be absolutely clear of the legality of what we're doing and what we're agreeing to. So I think if we can maybe between yourself Shane and Willie get a piece, a just some clarification from Sarah and Willie will share it with us and we'll just be absolutely clear how the income side of things go. In addition, yeah, I'll come back to you in a moment, Peter, if that's okay. Along in Fendhorn, they have the same thing. If you go down to the sands at Fendhorn, there's a sign up that says, please make a contribution for parking on the sands. There's no actual, well, there are some formal parking bays now, but to begin with, there were less of them. And folks just put some money in. Down at Rose Isle, you have to pay for parking in the middle of the forest, et cetera. So paying on a voluntary basis, quite frankly, I have no reservation with. I think there's detail to be worked out. Peter, you want to come back on this?
Thanks, Tom. I think this might be a case where it would be good to get our retaliation in first and tell the community councils that this is what is going to happen and why. I should perhaps preface my remarks by saying that I have absolutely no problem with what Shane is suggesting. But I think what we probably need to do is to tell particularly the Nairn West Community Council that if we don't share the income, the alternative is to rent the site out, which could conceivably bring us in significantly less. Or alternatively, we would have to cover the startup costs of yeah, probably 25,000 pounds a car park and then pay for the maintenance thereafter. I think if we educate our target audience at an early stage, we might well get less flack later on.
Yep. I'm, oh, sorry, Peter.
I was going to then follow on and ask Shane, I mean, presumably the machines that he is proposing will then be easily converted to proper use if we should decide to go ahead on a compulsory basis in future years.
You're on mute Shane.
So thank you councillor. Yeah, the machines are our standard machines that we now use, our intelligent parking meters. So A, they're solar and B, that we have real time monitoring of them. So they tell us when they're not work, not well, they've run out of paper. And we can scrutinize every transaction and run reports on, you know, the, the level of usage. Knowing the number of spaces, we can sort of calculate roughly what the occupancy levels are and therefore understand what level of compliance that is. I mean, I would also suggest that, that in parallel to this, and this is just ancillary information, I'm also working with Robin Pope on CCTV issues around the council. And one of those aspects is to expand CCTV to vulnerable sites, including car parks. So I would envisage that any money the service makes is probably going to be reinvested in better infrastructure so that we can actually help manage these sites. And, and you know, when there's untoward issues happening, we've got better public space CCTV as well to cover, you know, key locations like car parks where the public gather and where vehicles and pedestrians are slightly more vulnerable when there's larger groups. So these are just one of the examples of where any income that the service receives is about supporting service delivery. It's not about dealing with budget deficits or anything along that way. I think we've moved far on from that as a council. And that what we're really keen to do is to maintain the level of service provision across the council in relation to parking and improve it, make it more sustainable, make it a better quality, look at taking income sources to reinvest in things like CCTV. So the machines that we will be using will be our standard machines. And, you know, we can change the tariffs on them overnight if members so wished. That's not a problem. The technology is very flexible these days.
Yep. Basically what we're being asked to agree to is allowing this voluntary scheme to go ahead with no a financial burden on the local area at all, the common good, you know. We receive a percentage of income. This will have that. This will, how that income is generated will be monitored over the season. Subsequently, there will be a full consultation in line with what happens elsewhere to see what may happen in the future. And that's, that's where we're at at the moment, really. Laurie, you're going to come in.
It's a query here, does the ratable value of the car park change once you put these meters in?
No councillor, it doesn't. We have a ratable value on the fact that it's a car park. So I pay rates for these car parks already, even though we don't get any income from them. So to be honest, it's going to help pay the rates I'm already paying to a degree as well. So there's a lot of hit, this is when I talked about the annualized cost of a car park. It includes things like water rates, business rates as well, which, which the service are paying right now. And they're not coming to the common good fund for that money, which I would say technically we should be, but we haven't been. And, and, and the council has been paying those, those business rates and water rates for these sites for many, many years and will continue to do so under the proposal that we have here.
Okay. Any other questions, folks, any?
Can I add something councillor Hegi? I just want to go, just want to go back to, to the, the links. And my concerns about managing the, the the environment and, and members, I would, I would welcome your views on. Look, I mean, this is, this is obviously, this must have been at the Nairn show. Because there looks like, I don't know what was happening that day.
That's, that's the, that's unpacking up to go away after the Nairn show, I think.
Right, okay, so.
Show the end game, sorry.
Their game, sorry. So there we go, I'm sorry, that, that, that's not my choice, that's just Google. That's the day in which, that was in August 2008, they took that image. But let's just, what suggestions would members like to see for the management of the grass area? And may I suggest that maybe, maybe it may be a scope to protect the main links area. And if there are to, if the members have a mind to allow people to park on the grass, that it's, it's contained on the, on the right hand side. What's the members' views?
Well, the, the problem you have is on the right hand side is a football pitch, which you can't actually see and that's used quite often. I, I don't really have a problem parking in the grass, it's just, you gotta park in the grass, just pay, contribute to the parking. But they don't actually cause a lot of damage. And the problem is if they don't let them park in the grass, they're going to have to go into the side streets and cause more problems. So it's only at weekends we have a problem with, well, it's not even a problem, it's only at weekends they park on the grass. To the, the left up towards the barn stand and they're well ordered. It's just the fact that if you're parking the grass, that's why I said, ask for additional money. But yeah, I wouldn't put pillars in because we used to put posts in, 40, 50 years ago, there were posts always put in, they were taken out for for games day, for the shows and put back once they left. It wasn't worth the trouble, they just stopped putting them up and down in the end. So I wouldn't bother with pillars. I just think you're putting more, more stress and more work on the, the hands of the council depot boys for, for no per, for no good purpose. Cause you can access it from so many different points.
Yeah. Peter, you have something?
Yeah, thanks, thanks, Tom. I, I take the point that you were making Laurie about the trouble about putting those up and then take them down again and whatever. That is all very well while we have a voluntary scheme. But if we were to move to a compulsory scheme and we have a traffic order for the car park, we presumably would not be able to enforce any parking charges for those that parked on the grass. And to my mind, we would need to somehow be able to collect money from those that were parking on the grass. Whether it's by putting up a fence, you channel everybody through the one entrance. And or whether we just extend that the parking, those are traffic order to cover a wider area.
Pals, the Saggers, I think you make a good point. And I think this touches on some of the discussions we had earlier about reinvesting some of this money and expanding the car park. So another benefit, I think, of having a voluntary scheme and seeing what sort of level of, of uptake that is, is it makes the business case for the council then to work with members and, and the common good fund to look at, how much do we invest to increase the capacity of the car park? And what level of expansion do we do? Do we just do matting on the grass to reinforce it? Or do we do a tarred area or whatever the case may be? But that's, that's for the future. But I think if we were to enforce parking charges, then we would, as, as you say councillor, we would have to revisit the traffic order to extend the coverage of the traffic order because it currently only covers the tar. So if we were to expand either to the right or the left, we do so with full transparency, so you understand what the budget is and how much would be required to invest. But the good thing about generating income is that the council can probably help a great deal in raising the capital required for that sort of level of investment, as we've done in other areas. Sky being a key example where, where many hundreds of thousands of pounds has been, been allocated to investment in infrastructure. But it's funded from the income that's being generated and doesn't burden the council's capital budget.
Yep, yep. Yeah, I'm quite content with that. Any other points anybody wishes to raise? Right. Can we, Peter, you're muted, I can't let breathe.
Thank you, Tom. Shane mentioned early on camper vans. Shane, we are at a very early stage of looking at some sort of facility on the maggot for camper vans. But it's very unlikely to happen this year because of all the various delays built into the system. But do we as members want to come to a view about camper vans on Coming Street?
Shane, were you suggesting that we should discourage the camper vans there? Or, I mean, if you have, if you're going to line the Coming Street one, it would be lined for cars, I would assume. But we do get camper vans going down there as well. Is there a way of differentiating or how do we go about that?
So, so it will be Parking Services team that will actually do the lining. We've actually got the equipment to do it ourselves now for the car parks. So we don't burden the roads guys, they're busy on other things. So we generally do it ourselves now. And I'll make sure that there's a number of bays that are slightly wider so that motorhomes can park in a delineated bay. You know, and feel confident in parking. The only thing that I, I, I suggest is we currently have a policy that motorhomes are prohibited overnight for council car parks. And that's, that's what the signs in the car parks say at the moment. And I just won't, wondered if members had an alternative view on that. You know, because my, my, my scope would be to maintain that position, not to change it. That's the current position unless members are review otherwise. There are some complications around inviting motorhomes to stay overnight. There's environmental health issues, there's licensing issues because you're creating an informal campsite. And it's not your genuine motorhome majority users that are a problem. Because generally speaking, they get caught short and they have to stay overnight somewhere. They're contained, they're in their unit, they go to sleep with their family and they get up in the morning and off they go. It's the people who get the table and chairs out, hang the washing out and have a barbecue and all the other unattractive and unauthorized activities that cause the problem. And my officers are, we look to educate, we don't look to enforce, you know, we look to educate and we look to give guidance to people. But we, we, we have a pragmatic approach, you know, if somebody's not causing a problem, we, we tend not to be banging on their caravan, motorhome, asking them to leave. That's not the intention of the council. We just want to have some standardized policies across our, our, our service provision. And that's what the sta, the current policy is, is, is to prohibit use of car parks as campsites. Basically, that's, that's the position of the council and that's what we can defend.
So, so basically, even with the voluntary system that we are here, the invitation to pay, you are saying that there will be times when council officials will go down, say about eight or nine o'clock at night and if there's camper vans at the harbour, you will say to them, excuse me, do you understand you can't stay here after 10 o'clock, find somewhere else to go? That is, yeah, I, I can live with that in the short term.
Can I just come in there to, I don't particularly have a problem with camper vans staying overnight down there. As long as they don't cause any offence or problems, they're going to have to stay somewhere. I mean, we get, I get them all the time at the swimming pool, they don't cause any problems there. Thing is, if you push away from the harbour, where do they go? They end up in a, a lay-by in the A96, which is to my mind more dangerous. I'm quite happy for them at the harbour or even at Coming Street because they don't actually cause any problems. That's, that's the, that's my view in it. There, there's not, there's a perceived problem, but I don't think the problem is there. There's, there's one or two of the community councils have got perceived problems with them. But I personally don't have any problem with them. She say that they go in, they go to sleep, they don't cause, don't cause anybody any problems. And then by eight o'clock the next morning, they're gone.
I, I would go back to what, what Shane said there. I think that there is an area where there are people who say they, they get their tables out and their wine out and their beer out and so on. To what extent they, they dump their dirty water in the river Nairn, I'm not entirely sure. But that is a perceived issue as well. I think, I, I think ultimately if we go with trying to move them on and it becomes known, they have their own Facebook pages, I think, web pages. So they'll soon come to a conclusion, you don't stay overnight in Nairn. Obviously that will form part of a review when we go on. I would say that some, we're getting a background noise here, sorry. Shane, you have something in there?
Yep. Yeah, yeah, no, no, I, I fully take on board what councillor Fraser is saying here that, that we did this last year, so we were, we were out on patrols last year. And, and from an education point of view, we were looking to educate, you know. I don't think we issued any tickets to anybody because most people who didn't realise were quite fine and, and said, thanks very much and, and off they went. Because at the end of the day, they should be looking for service campsites, you know, to get all the advantages of the provisions that are available to them. But I, I, I take on board what councillor Fraser is saying because we have similar problems in Sky and Western Ross and, and many other locations in, in car parks. And my officers do go with the view of educating, you know. And, and the prohibition is there is to deter people getting tempted to do things they shouldn't be doing. That's really why it's there. Because unfortunately, there is a small minority, well, in fact, there's a much larger minority now because of staycations who, for example, are renting a motorhome in central England, never driven one before, load the family app, come to the, to the Highlands and don't really understand the etiquette or understand some of the, the things they should be planning for. And this is the experience that we had last year that's led us to create a visitor management plan and help, help provide services. So it, it's, it's a narrow problem that it, it's, it's, it's related to COVID and the current circumstances that we're in. And I think you're right that we should monitor it this year and keep members informed about how successful or unsuccessful it was ready for next year. And this should be an ongoing situation. We should be, visitor management should be a proactive approach by the council. And I think it is, we've, the council's acknowledged that and the Tourism Committee has taken a lead on that. And I take on board what councillor Fraser is saying and just, I just assured him that it's not, we're not there to police people or bully them. We're going to try and educate and advise.
Liz, you had a question?
Yeah, I'm just going to say, I support what you said, Tom, we should certainly monitor it and keep our car parks and clear. I was just thinking, if we're trying to generate income from our car parks and then there's people staying over or, you know, for lengthy periods of time, then that could reduce the amount of income coming in. And there is plenty of, you know, caravan sites, camp sites and around about Nairn with Park Dean and Delneys and I touched to clean an interest, my parents have got a, a campsite just for five vans. So I think, I think, yes, there was, there was a lot of trouble before the policy to move them on with people feeling that the harbour was blocked up for significant periods. So I'd be happy for the council to carry on with its policy to keep people informed and and if we, and in the future, if we provide facilities somewhere where they can legitimately stay over and empty their dirty water. And then when that point comes, we could look at how charge instructors and how they can help support that facilities when they're, when they're delivered.
I'm, I would be quite relaxed to taking, taking the view that this year, I'm comfortable with what Shane has just said about going along, educating, messaging to folk. I mean, in the summertime, having a look down at the harbour, I do that fairly regularly. There are some folk who have been there for a week at a time, you know, they go away during the day, they come back at night. So they do use it as their overnight thing. There's a guy who stays on a boat all summer as well, that's another story. There was a guy who had a van down there for the whole summer and he worked in one of the hotels, not last summer, but summer before. And just came down there and slept at night. So there are different ways in which people do it. I think if we monitor it, if we, if, if, if we're content with the experience of officers going down, having a look, having a talk, giving us factual information rather than just somebody's view. Oh, I was talking to Eugenie in the Fisher Town last week and she was telling me and she may be telling me a porky or whatever. But so I think if we use this summer to gain factual evidence and formulate any future policy on that, I would be content with that. And I would say that Shane, with the experience of Sky, Western Ross, et cetera, I'm sure we would get a good factual backup. Peter?
Yes, Tom, I, I'd be happy to do that. And if we find, say at the end of July, it's not working, we can always revisit it and change our minds for the rest of the summer. So I would suggest we go ahead with what is proposed and take a look at it again if it's deemed to be necessary.
I'm sure Shane would then come to us and say, look, this is, this is a plus, this is a minus. And, and if necessary, ask us for any alternative view that there is. Are you okay with where we are at the moment Shane, or do you have anything else to ask us? I think we're kind of at a stage where we're agreeing. Let me see if we are. We're agreeing about the machines going in, monitoring taking place. I would be personally, and I'm not sure about others, about the one, two and three pound structure that Shane and also giving us regular updates as the summer progresses as to the uptake, the income and how we're getting on. That seems to me to be the simplistic kind of summary of where we're at. Are we comfortable with that?
I would just add that, that obviously the, the actual, I'll go back and get more information for the members on the common good split, you know, that, that's an aside. It, it shouldn't impact on the premise. But, but an aside, we'll get much better clarification for you from the common good officer about the legitimacy of sharing the income.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, if we leave you and Willie to have a wee chat about that and sort it out with Sarah and then we can just report back to us what the actual situation is. And if necessary, we could have a, well, we've got award business meeting before too long anyway. And we could, if we agree on the premise, an award business meeting, we could perhaps vary the detail without too much of a hassle. Peter?
Thanks, Tom. Shane, could you put down or send an email with the details of the costs involved so that we can put the case to the community council? put the case to the community councils and say, this is what it might cost if we went down Route A, B and C. And we're going to go down a fifty percent route because it's going to give us the best deal.
Yeah, I'll try and get some figures for you, members, not a problem.
Okay, thanks. Right, does anybody have anything else? Shane, are you content? You have a clear enough picture from us about how to proceed now?
Yes, I just take you the members, I mean, members are approving the the implementation of the the meters on a voluntary pay basis. I mean, obviously, we, this will be well publicized and we will make sure that that any communication is made to the, is is known to the members. But I mean, we would look to to do this quickly. It's not something that we want to put off. We've got twenty one sites, as I've said, to look at. And I welcome the members' positive response to this proposal.
Yep. The very last sentence of the report we have is, members are asked to agree to the installation of parking charge machines at Coming Street, the harbour and the Maggot in Nairn for voluntary payment only for the twenty twenty one season to support more effective traffic management in the area. We can see in the, in the manner is agreed with the Shane, you know, with parking, with charging, et cetera, and to be revisited. So just to be monitored rather. So that's comfortable enough, Willie? Are we okay with that?
Yes.
Yeah, I agree.
We okay, everybody? Thank you very much, Shane. At long last, you've got a decision out of us. Well done.
Thank you, members, and enjoy the rest of your day. Thank you.
Hey, thank you.
Can I, can I just ask you a question now, Willie? I actually lost my paper on the the parking charge, but I couldn't find it on the the council website. I could for the, for today, the twentieth, I could find the the first item, the what do you call it, the the Coastal Community Fund, but I couldn't find anything on the parking.
You got a supplementary one.
Find on the website. It's not on the council website for the the general public.
Well, when I looked it up last week, it was, when I looked it up.
I was trying to get it today, just on my second screen. I couldn't find it.
I'll double check and check that out.
Maybe it's missing. Okay.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Right, folks, okay, we're, we're having a wee chat afterwards about.